Welcome everyone to the regular board meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Monday, June 21st, 2021, and we are at the St. Peter Community Center's Governor's Room. It is 6:30-ish. I would like to call the meeting to order. If we could rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would anyone make a motion to consider and adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. We would consider requests to speak on the agenda. We do have someone that wishes to speak tonight to a not to an agenda item, but just to address the board for a minute or two. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? With that, Dr. Marty Duncan, if you want to have a seat and address the board.
For those that don't know me, my name is Marty Duncan. I was a school superintendent for 35 some years, 10 years on the school board here in St. Peter, and I am now on my fourth year on the Board of Directors over at the Faribault State Academies. Ironically, that's where I grew up. But as I'm the I occupy a position that is allowed by statute that they have one retired school board member on their board. I want to talk, I was looking through, you have a document, the third document in is a page from a document called Minnesota's Promise. And just before the meeting, I was looking at a real quick, short quote. "The challenge before us is twofold. We must find ways to close achievement gaps between Minnesota students and their peers in the highest performing nations of the world while also closing gaps between groups of our own students here at here at home." In all those years that I served, worked with school boards, I worked to add, we did lots of different things. We added classroom teachers, we added special ed teachers, we added new sports, of course, to comply with Title IX. We added a in Coleraine, we added an early learning center for kids age one to four and a half or five. We added in addition to a high school in one of my districts in order to stop the fumes from going into the high school and the regular high school. In all those efforts, we sometimes struggled to have a balanced budget, but we managed to get get there. About five years ago, Minnesota reduced its minimum number of days to 165. About that time, I heard 80% of the postgraduate students at MIT were from India and up and down 10% from China. That number goes up and down. That's when I said, what's the cause? Students in far eastern countries have adequate learning time on task. I am asking the board to charge a study group with the task of looking at learning time on task. Now, so far, we've had three motions over in Faribault to add more time. Just so you know, the first time, the first time it got snafu'd, the budget director, the business manager forgot to put it in the budget. The second time, the Office of Management budget came down and reduced our budget without even asking us what we wanted to do. And the third time was April of 2020, we got hit by the pandemic. Well, thinking about it, I'm thinking, you know what? The St. Peter Board could be a board that says, we want to say something about it. And that's what that's what this request is. Way down at the bottom, I have a last paragraph, perhaps on my letter that I gave to the board. Perhaps we cannot remake our world, but we can discuss in public what could be possible and what could be done, even on a local level. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Dr. Duncan.
You bet. You realize that's about the first time anybody's ever called me doctor. I never use the title. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to our action items for tonight, or no, we'll move on to the approval of consent agenda first. Does anyone wish to make a motion or pull any one particular item out for consideration?
So if we have a couple of questions, we pull it out or just talk it out?
We can talk it out.
If it's an individual thing, you pull it off, but I have questions too in general.
Okay, well, let's just see. Well, I just want to know for the social worker that we're adding, how was it decided that it would go ad north in the early learning center?
We looked at the levels of service that were provided at each building, and those were the two programs that had less service than everywhere else. And so there was some adjustments made to even it out.
Okay. And then I have two other things, but hopefully they'll be just that easy. I see that the new occupational therapists we're hiring were not going through Mbed with that, and I'm curious if other positions will move to that too, like, or what was the reason for doing that?
When we've had Mbed employees who are actually full-time employees of St. Peter, we ask if they would like to be a St. Peter employee instead because then they follow our calendar, they follow our contract, and so we made that option available.
Okay.
So, and that's happened with other positions with people who have been here full-time.
And then the last is with the preschool special education. I see that we're adding an additional teacher. I think if I remember, it was for the year, are the numbers just high? I'm guessing the numbers, we just have high numbers there, or the need's higher, or both?
Now I'm going to look at ET and yes.
Is that the occupational position that it lists?
Yeah.
Yep, so that position is in place because our goal is to do more inclusion.
Oh, gotcha.
And so if we're able to put students in our general education classrooms, then we have a part-time teacher who would be paid on a timesheet as needed to push into those classrooms so we can provide least restrictive environment.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
My only question is, I know, I can't remember what the dollar amount is that needs to, where a gift needs to go before gifts and donations. I thought it was 2,000, and I noticed there's a $4,000 gift in the consent agenda.
I thought it was higher.
I thought it was five.
I thought it was five.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
But I could be wrong, too.
Well, I just, I.
I think it's five.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing something wrong.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. I also would like to point out there's two long-term teacher resignations. That Mr. Warren Peterson and Scott Hermanson, so just thank them for their time.
Absolutely.
Chair Leonard, I've been in contact with Tim Riegner, and the bills are in order.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah, your point is well taken. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to action items. The first one seems like one of the most fun things that we get to do, so.
It certainly is. We had 170 graduates cross the stage on May 28th. You have the list in front of you with an additional, I believe, four to approve. All of these students have met the state requirements for graduation, as well as the additional St. Peter Public Schools graduation requirements.
Excellent.
Do we usually do this after graduation, or do you usually do it before graduation?
It's usually done in May.
In May, okay. We'll just blame it on COVID?
We, yes.
Because you're trying to get so many kids?
That's exactly why.
Well, I just saw it, and I was like, well, that's kind of weird, but I didn't know.
Yeah, it is usually done in May. And thank you to those of you who were there on graduation night. I thought it was, it was my favorite one, yeah, celebration.
Do you want to read those four additional names into the record, or do you think that?
I sure can.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm glad I brought the packet up here. Ramla Mohammed and Louise Guera and Nathan Opats and Martin Thiogas.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Do we want to make a motion to approve the or accept the graduates?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Action item number two is to remove the return to school committee. Superintendent Gronseth, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, this was done last spring as COVID, we were just finding out about COVID, and there were lots of decisions to be made, and now we are, we're on the other side of it, and we have every reason to believe that there won't be any restrictions or COVID-specific guidance coming to us, and so there isn't the need for this committee.
Anyone want to make a motion to remove the return to school committee?
I move that we remove the return to school committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number three, approval of tenure action for probationary teachers, which is the second most fun thing that we get to do. Who wants to speak to this? Superintendent Gronseth?
Yes, we have seven teachers this year who are at their tenure level, recognize the the amount of work that goes into not only becoming a teacher, but then successfully navigating their probationary period, having a number of evaluations per year until they reach this this point, which for most of these teachers is three years. Teacher can also receive tenure after receiving tenure in another district and working here for one year, so that could also be a possibility, but want to recognize the the work that these teachers put in and to earn their their tenure.
Excellent, thank you. Do I need to read their names into the record? Is that something that I have to do?
You certainly can.
If I don't, if I'm not required, I won't. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve tenure action for probationary teachers?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number four, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of St. Peter Recreation and Leisure and St. Peter Community and Family Education. Tammy Skinner, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. This is an annual memorandum of understanding that we do with the Recreation and Leisure Services Department. There are no changes from last year. The nice thing about having this memorandum is that we do not duplicate services so that we both ensure that we are wise with our funds and can provide the most services for the dollars that we have.
Any additional questions?
I move that we approve the MOU between the City of St. Peter Rec and Leisure and St. Peter Community and Family Education.
Second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number five, and this is approval of a yearly government lease. And I will turn it over to Superintendent Gronseth.
And actually, I will turn it over to Mr. Riegner.
Thank you. Before you in the packet, this is an annual, has been an annual thing for probably about the last 10 to 15 years, or it was going before I started eight years ago. We basically borrowed for a couple of different technology needs, the one-to-one program for the ninth graders, when that was started for their, you know, either Chromebooks or iPads or whatever isn't working then, and then also the other computer things for the school, and we set them up on a four- to five-year lease, and we typically put it out on bids or requests for proposals, I should say, to the local banks, and we received two very good proposals this year, again, from First National Bank and Hometown Bank. First Nationals was just a little bit lower, so I guess I'd recommend that we take the First National Bank proposal for 257,000, $257,700 lease. Part of it's over four years and part of it's over five years. So the banks in town have always worked with us very well, and I guess that's what I recommend to do. It helps our cash flow. It started a number of years ago when our cash flow was very tight. We're to the point now where if we we could stop doing this, but as we'll get to later on in the budget, there's just a lot of, a lot of unknowns going into things, so I'd recommend that we do it for this year and then reevaluate it again next year at that time.
Excellent.
It does require a resolution, I believe, for passage.
I move the approval of the yearly governmental lease. We have a motion and a second for the resolution. Any further discussion?
Do we have the resolution?
We do.
There should be one in the packet, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will take the next several minutes and read it to you.
Okay, perfect.
Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 508, State of Minnesota, as follows. "The government lease purchase master agreement," the agreement or master lease, "and supplement or supplements thereto are hereby approved substantially in the form presented to this board and on file in the Office of the Clerk. The superintendent of the district is hereby authorized to execute the agreement and any supplement or supplements thereto on behalf of the district, and to execute such other certificates and documents as may be necessary and appropriate to effectuate the transactions contemplated by this agreement and said supplement or supplements. The agreement, the supplement or supplements, and related documents may contain such necessary and appropriate variations, omissions, insertions, as the superintendent shall determine to be necessary, and the execution thereof by the superintendent shall be conclusive evidence of such determination and its approval by the board. The less C does not reasonably anticipate that it will issue tax-exempt obligations, not including private activity bonds, as defined in Section 141 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, in the aggregate amount in excess of 10 million during the calendar year in which the lease commences. The lease is designated as a qualified tax-exempt obligation for the purposes of Section 265 B.C. of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended relating to the deductibility of interest by financial institutions." Is that good?
That's good.
All right. Any further discussion? Calling the resolution. Tracy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Ben, aye. Resolution carries unanimously. We have two more resolutions tonight, everyone. But next is the approval of individual contracts. I'd like to turn that over to Superintendent Gronseth.
Yes, we have 13 individual contracts before you. I've met with each of them several times and have been working with Member Loken's Guard and shared with the negotiations committee before bringing them to you.
Vice Chair, Loken's Guard, do you have anything to add?
No, I've reviewed them with Superintendent Gronseth, and they're all in order.
Excellent. I have a question for Member Loken's Guard. So did you get a C, a total cost as far as the raise goes? Was that part of the information that you saw?
Yep.
And that was in line with what we, where we want to be?
Yep, there were some that were different, but Superintendent Gronseth explained the rationale.
As long as you've seen that, that's good.
I move that we accept the 17 additional, or the 17 individual, 13 individual contracts. Felt like 17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That moves us on to the 2021-22 Budget Plan. Business Manager Riegner and Superintendent Gronseth.
I guess I can truly start here. I will answer, you know, I'll try and be brief. I know you got a lot of things in there, and we did go over this extensively about a week ago in the Finance Committee meeting, but any questions, please let me know on that, because it is, it is fairly detailed, and there's a lot of assumptions this year because of a lot of different reasons, and I guess I'll throw that out right away at first. But it is an annual thing we have to do by July 1st, so we can spend money after the first of the year. If we do not approve a budget, then we cannot pay any bills or anything, and I guess that's kind of one of the things, too. Have you been following the education bill? The state has still not passed that yet, or as of 4 o'clock today. I don't know if they're still in writing, so there's a lot of assumptions in this yet because there's a lot of unknowns, even besides the the state portion of it with COVID and the other items that we have in there. But basically, there's nine pages, I think, in the, in the packet. The last page is kind of our enrollment assumptions, and I guess there's, there's really three big items in the the budget for this year and for our next couple of years. You know, first one is always, as you've heard me say, it's enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. You know, last year enrollment was down, just like pretty much, I think, every public school in the state with COVID. You know, one of the big questions is where are those students and will they be coming back? So that's really the first question for us. The second question, Superintendent Gronseth will get into it a little later tonight, is obviously our referendum that's coming up. And then the third one on the the budget is the COVID-related funds that we've received through the state, through the, from the federal government through the state. There's actually been three different bills that have passed that we're, we're kind of tapping into or using, for lack of a better word. There was one, there was one passed like December 29th, there was one passed, I think, then, I guess that was the second one, there was one passed earlier in 2020, and then there was the larger one passed in March of 2021. For lack of a better word, I called the funds S, they call them ESER funds, it's an acronym for things, so it's really ESER 1, 2, and 3 is the money we're going to get. And there's a few other things that that are out there and coming in, but those are the big, the big items, or the the big dollar amounts. And the important thing that we need to look at doing the next couple of years until enrollment does come back is using some of those funds to pay for some of the the needed things, some of the ongoing things, supplanting some things instead of totally supplementing. We used up a lot of funds in 2020, you know, for, you know, sanitation, for masks, for protections, for health care, for, you know, daycare and those items. You know, now we need to start, I think, shifting those funds to social workers, those type of things for the more for the more less physical things, and you'll see in the budget that we've got, I've got the money coming in, and then about half of it being spent for new things, and about half of it being spent for things we're currently doing or had been doing to supplant those funds. So those are really the three big, big, you know, variables for us, you know, enrollment, the referendum, and those funds, and then, you know, just going forward as far as the mixture of those. So the last page is enrollment. Really, we're looking at projecting a flat enrollment for next year, and then the following year probably up a little bit because I think the graduating class for next year is a little bit smaller, and then our graduating classes are fairly large, and we start to have enrollment drops naturally because we're projecting the kindergarten classes coming in a smaller, and typically we just roll each grade over. So that's, that's kind of the long-term outlook is we're probably a stable, you know, and again, that's really variable because of building and housing costs, and the city's been doing a great job of trying to get housing and people to come in. You know, we have grown quite a bit the last, you know, half a dozen years, and so that's, and with some of the other building going on in town, hopefully that'll lead to additional enrollment at the schools, so. But I guess page two is kind of an overview, that what I was talking about was mainly the the general unassigned fund, and I always spend most of our time concentrated on that, but page two is kind of an outline of of all the funds. You know, we have eight, nine different, different funds that are segregated out, you know, just going up, the trust fund is basically our scholarship fund, that basically just pays what money comes in, we pay out in scholarships. The debt redemption fund on 60, on line 65, basically the money comes in to pay the bond from the school, and the money goes out. Community service fund is one that has, COVID did, did hurt that fund quite a bit because most of that was revenue-based, and we couldn't do anything. In addition to that, they have cut back on the scholarships in early childhood, and that was a major source of revenue for us, so that that fund is, is projecting a deficit. We're looking at things to do to shore that up a little bit, but that's where that's currently at. The opposite kind of food service, line 55 has done very well. They have had free meals the last few years, so everybody's eat, we served a lot of meals. Our food vendor Avions has done a great job on doing that, so we've had a, had a surplus and a profit in that fund in food service. Going up the, up the thing a little bit, our, the operating capital, that's basically money that we bring in for physical things. We get so much per student, and it's for for desks, books, curriculum, leases, and that one kind of stays stable, and we, what comes in goes out. And also, I should point out, capital, the capital projects fund will be done hopefully after this year, as well as the bond fund. The last thing, one of the major last things in the bond fund is obviously, if you've been up to high school, they started work construction on the restrooms and those things here in the last probably week or two, so that that'll be, I don't think that'll probably get done in June, so we might see a little bit of that still in July, but that'll be hopefully closing out the the building fund. Long-term deferred maintenance, you'll see a little bit more of that next, next month. We have to do a, an annual report on that. And then just moving up line 37, it's the miscellaneous scholarships, the concession fund, the student activity funds, basically money the students raise, and it's for the students, and the students spend it. And then we have our assigned funds. The major one there is line 21, the operation of the new high school, which we're using some of that with the little bit of shortfall that we have going forward, and we'll get to that in the unassigned fund. The big one then that we talked, spent a lot of time, is line 10. We're coming into the year with about a 4.9 balance, that's, that's our projected, and again, if you remember, a couple of months ago, last month or a couple of months ago, we had the revised budget for 2021. These are the balance things there, so there's a lot of assumptions there, so we're starting this year with an assumed, assumed number, so if that makes, makes sense to you there. So, but we're projecting about 28 million in revenue and about 20, just about the same in expenditures and transferring out, and the fund balances projected to drop just a little bit in 2022, I guess is the the year for next year. So that's kind of an overview of all the funds, and for those that have been here for a while, we do the the rollout, which is the next pages, kind of pages two. kind of pages two through, two through six. And I go through these real quick. Page two was basically just FY '20, which was, two years ago, I just need to carry the numbers over. 21 is the year we're currently in. We're projecting to have about a 63-day fund balance carried out of the year on the bottom on line like 299, 300. And then we carry that over. And FY '22, this is what we're looking at for the unassigned fund balance. Basically, if you go to the middle, we're looking at having about a $22,000 revenue over shortfall or basic expenditures over revenue. Kind of, I'll go through this one a little bit in detail and the next years are kind of the same. We're looking at, and again, 328 is an estimate at this time. That's the estimated legislative increase at 2%. That's not been decided yet. So that's something they're still trying to decide up at the Capitol. I think one of the houses has it at two and one at three. So hopefully we'll be safe at 2% and we'll get at least that. There'll be some other funds, different places, but a lot of times they're assigned for specific things that have expenses to, so that's the one that really we have available to use at, more at your discretion. The change in enrollment, we're looking at a flat enrollment for next year. We did estimate the kindergarten class a little bit higher than it has been in the past due to the fact that this year it was very small. So hopefully we'll get some of those kids back. And if they're not there, we'll fill in the upper grades. We typically get some and I didn't project any increase in there. In the last couple of years, we have been, we have seen a nice jump in ninth graders. You know, I'm thinking that would attest to that. So that, due to the new school, I guess I have no stats on that, but that would just be my guess. So. Then compensatory, this was a big thing that the legislature did help us out with. We're projected down $30,000 in compensatory income. That's based on free and reduced applications. As I said before, when we talk about the food service, the lunches were all free this year and next year. So it was, we tried really hard to get everybody to fill out the application, but it's a complicated application. So we would have probably been down about $200,000 in compensatory, but the legislature came in and said, kind of a hold harmless, that whatever percent you had the year before, we'll pay you at that. So we're down a little bit because enrollment was down, but it would have been a lot worse otherwise. So. Then basically, you know, we've got some, the changes out of Hoffman, which we'll probably have more billings there on $40,000. CRF funds were funds that we spent last year that we won't have this year from COVID relief as well as the next couple of lines there, 333, 4, and 5. Then we added, this last year, we didn't charge for admissions and some other student fees, which we probably will have in 2022. And then here, 337, this is the ESER 2 money of $711,000. And that corresponds on the expense side down there with, of line 358, of $311,000 of new funding, which basically provides $400,000 of extra money to pay for current things or to supplant those costs. So I'll come back to that in just a little bit, but remember that $400,000 there. We have a lot more CTE classes, so we have a little more levy. And then we also transfer that $417,000 in from the, what I call the money we put aside four or five years ago for the new school. So the down on expenses, kind of the same thing, expenditure increase. You know, it's lower than it's been in the past. It's kind of an estimate. We removed some of the other items. You know, then we get down to new staff, replacement of staff and some of those things. And then a couple of things, lines 359, that we're kind of just catching up with. The tech initiative, the cost of the new lease, we take that away. So our projected expenditures for next year go to lines 342 and 343, right in the middle. We're looking at about 28 million in revenue and 28 million, we're short about 22,000. But remember in there, we've got $417,000 we're bringing in from the savings account. And there's also $400,000 of extra money from the ESER funds to pay for things. And it's kind of there and I've been in a few meetings and that a lot of the school districts in the same place are using it to, you know, get by the next couple of years on the additional programming while enrollments are down. And that's kind of the boat that pretty much all the school districts are in. And we need to get through the next two or three years. The ESER money is there to help us get through that and to pay for those items. So that's, you know, if not for that, the budget would obviously look a lot different and really do tend on enrollment. So basically, we, with this projection here and moving those funds in there, we stay about the same fund balance. And again, there's a lot of projections in there. There's still a lot of stuff to come from the state. You know, the enrollment's a big unknown until, you know, our kindergarten numbers are looking, are looking pretty good, it sounds like compared to other years. So we hopefully have a nice sized class there coming in. But until September 1st, 7th, we really just don't know the total number. So that's kind of the projection for '22. If you flip over to the next page on '23, it's pretty much all the similar same items. The only thing that's kind of different is on line 401, on the revenue side, and line 417 on the expense side. Now that's ESER 3 money. That's what was passed in March of this year. And again, we're doing the same thing. I'm spent, we got about $1.6 million out of that one. And we have some, a timeframe to spend that, about three years. So I'm projecting to spend half of it this year and half of the next year. And those are just really projections until we get into things. And that way, again, we're using $400,000 on the overall budget from the ESER funds, plus we're transferring in another $417,000 on that. And then the other really big thing, if I can find it here, is line 402, is the referendum. We're projecting, and we'll talk about this number later and how it came up with, but an additional $500,000 roughly in referendum money that would come in. That's over and above our current referendum. So with those items, we have a revenue, our over expenditures by about $58,000. So we're holding the fund balance in. Later on in here, we have the projection if the referendum does not fail. So kind of keep that one in mind. And then the next page, page six is FY '24. And again, even with the referendum money in there and moving that other funds in there, it starts to get really tight and negative. Part of the reason is because of, you know, adjustments would, we'd have to adjust something because enrollment is dropping on the projection here. And we don't really have a whole lot in. We got a 1% increase from the state because that one is the one they have to pass in two years and they haven't really thought about it. You know, they didn't pass this one, so that one's a total guesstimate. So, you know, again, since I've been here, the three, four years out always looks not very, not very well financially because hopefully we've taken a pretty conservative route to this. And that's what the next three years would look like if the referendum passes. Page seven then is kind of page five, FY '23, if the referendum would not pass. And if you go to line 402, on the other one, it said 521,000 positive. This one, it's 440,000 negative because that's the current referendum at $182 per student, approximately what we get. So that obviously looks fairly negative. And if you flip over to the next year, '24 without the referendum, it multiplies. Again, if it were not to pass, you'd probably have to go out and try and, again, the next year. But I think that's, I just wanted to show you what it would look like without the referendum in there. You know, everything else is basically the same. So I guess I'll go back to my initial three points. Enrollment, referendum, ESER money are the big items for the next couple of years. And there's a lot of programs out there. And I just said an MDE call at 4:30 this afternoon and, you know, somebody finally asked, you know, can we have a spreadsheet so we can know what's all really out there? Because, you know, all the business managers, you know, there's this stuff all over the place and just try and keep track of it. And the coding is, and you know, you don't want to lose anything obviously out of it, but there's just, there's a lot of moving parts. And because of that, there's still a lot of moving parts in this. You know, we tried to be conservative as we could on this and still be built realistically. And hopefully, you know, the House and Senate will come together here in the next, you know, next day or two so at least can get this done before. You know, because they sent out a memo. I don't know if you had a chance to read it much today, Bill, but I didn't get a chance at 4:30. It came out what happens or whatever, if it doesn't, something doesn't get passed. So. But that's, we're still kind of limbo on that, at least I am. And hopefully they'll pass something in the next couple of days so we can at least make our plans. The good thing for us at least, you know, we do have a cash reserve so we can get by for a little bit if they do not pay the money out. And I think that was uncertain what they would do on that. And then you've got, they got these borrowing certificates that they did, we've done years back, but we haven't to for a while. But they were pretty confident it wasn't going to come to that. But we've heard that for a little while too. So. I got a little long there, but any questions? Like I said, it's fairly detailed in here and there's a lot of, I hate to say that again, but there's just a lot of assumptions because I don't know if it's going to be 2%, if it's going to be 3%, if it's, they'll come together and say it's 1% or, you know, where it's going to go. So. The good news is we have a good fund balance and we are, the federal government has passed some funds, come down three different times that we will be using up.
Yeah, Tim, I was curious, like, could you just refresh memory? Why is it $417,500 that we're using from?
Because we had four times that amount and we divided it out over four years.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing, I think when Dr. Olson was here last year, we just decided we'd try and do it four years and we just divided by that number. You, you know, again, if we have a good year in 2021, and I'll go back to that a little bit. I think our expenses for this year are going to be, come in a little bit under budget from what we talked about last month. And the revenue is still one because of the enrollment, I'm not totally sure about. But if we do come in underneath, you know, if we come in with a good year and we don't need to use the money, we can use it there and then, you know, use it the fifth year down if we need to or move 200. So that's, that's one nice thing about signed money. It is kind of at our discretion to move it or not. So. But that, there's nothing magical except it was the number divided by four.
And then on that line, on line, you know, 339 and 405, it says either lower the fund balance goal or, is there a benefit for us to lower that fund balance goal? I know we've had less of a fund balance goal and flew through the auditors fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to get us in trouble, but if you could speak to that so I can better understand it.
Yeah, you know, the fund balance, that, you know, and you talk to the auditors and it gets a little frustrating every year you ask them what should you have? And their response will be, it's up to you guys to manage the school. And our fund, the fund balances, you know, I look at them all over the state and they're all over the place. There's schools with 10-days fund balance, five-day fund balances, and there's schools probably with 80 to 100 days. We're, I always try and compare us to some of the schools in the Big South and similar. We're probably real similar about in the middle of, with our fund balance. You know, and it's, you know, that is definitely an option. It's for when, you know, if we do need to lower it because to keep programming, where you guys want to keep it at, that is an option. And I think over the last few years, we built it up because, you know, enrollment was strong and it's kind of a rainy day fund. And it might rain, you know, you know, farm days, but that's what it's for. And, you know, we have had, you know, some good economic years, but we are, you know, we, things are just shifting. And it's, actually, this one is probably, and I hate to say it, it's at least sure I've been on a budget because it's just, I had to be a little more, you know, we were a little more aggressive maybe on a few things, especially on the expense side, you know, and the special ed things have changed. You know, there was a couple of things that have happened on the special ed side that are going to cost us a little bit more money through embed that, 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 just they're there. And so it's a little, it's tightened up. And I do think '21 will come out okay where we're at. At least that's all indications that I have and we'll get, start and get it closed up a little more, you know, next month or two. But yeah, that is an option that we do have to lower the fund balance down. And it might naturally have to happen if things, if enrollment doesn't improve and the legislature, you know, if they come back with 1% or half percent, you know, in two years or whatever come out of here. So.
And then lastly, I just have one question because we talked about it in the Finance Committee. One of the expenses that was on there had to do with the Hoffman Center. And we had just had a meeting about that. And isn't that covered by, I'm going to guess, section 28 or something? I can't remember the number that you guys brought up, that a lot of those funds are, go through.
Student tuition, our student billing.
Yeah.
The Hoffman Center, it's, I hate to say it, it's really complicated with that because they're special, they're special ed students there and there's non-special ed students.
Okay.
So there's a different payment mechanism that we have depending upon the special ed or non. And then with the Hoffman Center, also with their change this year, and that's another longer story for Mr. Gronseth, but with their change in students this year, it's really changed our thing too and how we're, you know, the staffing level, I guess from mine, the staffing levels. And the billing process will be a little bit different. You know, it does cover our expenses basically, what we bill out and we get from tuition billing. So, but it is going to be a little bit different model for us, both with the students and on the business, I would say on the business side.
Does that, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say thank you.
Oh, does that, so with the Hoffman Center, does that between, theoretically, if there's no St. Peter kids out there, we should be even on that?
Right.
Okay. And are we, do you think?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I mean, these are a lot of numbers to look at for me to figure that out.
Right, yeah. And the Hoffman Center, I don't want to say that's a whole separate, that's one thing. It's not broke down, but if you ever hear Fund 22, we run all the Hoffman expenses through Fund 22 so we can keep them separate. And then we've got a revenue side.
He said section 28.
Fund 22, that's what I was thinking, not section 28.
And I was just going to add, although you see an expense there, it would be offset by revenue on the other side.
Okay. And that's where there was one line in there that I had 40,000 of extra billing from the Hoffmans. That's because we had extra expenses built in on the expense side. So then I had to put it back in on the revenue side.
God, that's what I was talking about. That caught my eye. Thank you. So.
Well, I move we approve the preliminary 2021-2022 school district budget.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Tim.
Well, we got to do the most fun thing and the second most fun thing. So now we get to do the least favorite thing, which is talk about raising taxes. Unlike the feds, the state, the county, the city, in most instances, school districts must get voter approval to raise taxes. So that's what we want to talk about. We have a referendum that is ending and we're talking about where we go from here. So Superintendent Gronseth.
Yes, the existing operating referendum has been in place for 10 years and it is set to sunset at the end of this calendar year. That means that we will continue to have the current funding for the next school year. But unless we pass a referendum in November, we would not have it for the following school year. So we have been talking about this for quite some time and have collected quite a bit of data. And tonight is before you a resolution of intent, which does not set the amount that we will be asking for, but says that we are definitely planning to go out for a referendum in November of the coming year. And in a future meeting next month, we would be bringing to you a resolution. And in a future meeting next month, we would be bringing to you a resolution that has the exact ballot language and be setting the amount. And so tonight is really about deciding, um, to positively go up for a referendum in the fall.
Any initial discussion before I read the resolution?
What is the deadline we have to have? I mean, because when does absentee ballot, you know, that starts in like August? So what, what is the date that we have to have that to this date?
It is in August, it's about mid-August, but it's right after, um, it wouldn't be in time for our August meeting, and so that's why we will consider that for our July meeting.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Indicating the intent to move forward with an operating referendum in November twenty twenty-one, whereas the current voter-approved operating levy of one hundred and eighty-two dollars and ten cents for our district is set to expire in twenty twenty-one, and whereas the current operating levy is necessary to maintain quality programming, and whereas additional funds are needed to realize the mission and vision for the St. Peter Public Schools, therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby intends to take future action to place an operating referendum on the November twenty twenty-one ballot. Any more discussion? Anyone move the resolution?
I move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the resolution, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Tracy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. We will move on to action item number nine, and that is a second reading of revisions to the policy manual. And this is for policy five thirty-four for unpaid meal charges, specifically the deletion of zero zero four point one one unpaid student meal charges. I don't know if the policy committee or Superintendent Gronseth would like to speak to that?
I, I can start. This is, um, really an updated of language. Much of it, however, is carried forward from our current policy, and so it doesn't change any of the practices or procedures that we have in place for unpaid meals. Um, so it's just updating the number and some of the language around it.
The legal references in the end, that's just MSBA stuff, right? Or is that state?
That's state statute, that is.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, do we, that's, that actually comes out, correct? That's not a part of the policy? The, what that talks about is reflected in the policy above, correct?
Right, but we do leave those legal references, so we know which statutes it applies to.
Okay.
I kind of feel like, for people that really, really love to look at policies, they would probably like to, at least they know where we're getting our policies from by leaving it there. I don't think our current policies have it, but seeing MSBA gives it to us, I don't see a reason to take it out.
Hey, yeah, I like it as long as we keep the policies up to date, so if state statute then we change with it.
And that's where MSBA would tell us, right? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the revisions to the policy manual?
I'll make a motion to approve the five thirty-four unpaid meal charge policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Policy Committee. Action item number ten is, uh, our last action item and our last resolution of the evening, and it is to approve a landowner petition for detachment and annexation from one school district to another. And Vice Chair Lokensgard and Superintendent Gronseth can speak to that.
As well. I have been working with a, a family on, uh, their property. They have a property that is in two parcels because of a land swap that happened years and years ago. And, um, as they're making some changes to their property, the county requires that their parcel be at least three and a half acres, and they need to combine the two parcels into one to reach that three and a half acre. About two point seven acres of it, um, falls into the Sibley East School District and about one point seven acres of it falls in the St. Peter School District. The dwelling of the property, uh, and the majority of it is in Sibley East, and so they are asking that we annex and detach the one hundred by seven hundred and forty-foot strip of land, um, to the Sibley East School District. And I know that Member Lokensgard and Member Carlson both, um, are aware of the situation and I don't know if there's anything more that you wanted to add.
Nope, it gets a little convoluted out in Northland. Three school districts all out there, so.
And, yeah, just to state again, the land that is being transferred out of the district hasn't had a house on it probably ever, uh, so.
No, it was a road.
Yeah.
Oh.
And, uh, we have open enrollment in Minnesota, so whatever school district, uh, students are in, they can choose to go to another or go to private school or anything, so I don't, uh, I don't see any issue with, uh, this request at all.
Uh, it should be noted that, uh, Superintendent Gronseth did offer up to move, have them move the whole property to St. Peter School District, so.
You didn't go for that one?
They declined.
They declined.
Well, at least you tried. You don't know unless you ask.
Uh, I can read the resolution into the record. Uh, whereas the St. Peter School District has received a written request for the annexation and detachment of a one point seven acre parcel of land, and whereas the land is located in an ag district which requires three point five acres, uh, to build a home, uh, and whereas the property is used for agricultural purposes, therefore be it resolved that the St. Peter School Board approves the annexation and detachment as requested for the property described in the board packet, uh, which, uh, Vice Chair Lokensgard said is in greater Northland, so.
Yep.
Can we request you to read it? I'm just kidding.
And you'll be here longer.
I'm just kidding.
I'll read it real slow.
No, 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 I was, that is some verbiage there, so.
Dr. Soderland?
But it's a hundred feet by seven hundred and forty.
You own land, Vice Chair Lokensgard, you own land. Can you understand these land records? Because I have encountered them for work in the past couple of years and I, I don't get it.
It's not whether we understand them or not. It's whether the county does.
But do most landowners understand this or no?
That's what you got bench posts pounded into the ground. I'll spray them red if you're worried about it.
And that's why there's section markers buried throughout the county.
Excellent, that makes me feel better, that makes me feel better. Uh, any further discussion?
For me.
I will call the resolution, uh, Tracy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Resolution carries unanimously. We are moving on to information items. It is, uh, summer and we have an upcoming date that we have to file a, um, operating referendum, uh, plan, and we also have, uh, filing date for elections in November as well. Superintendent Gronseth?
There's a rate, um, there is a requirement for us to officially post and advertise that, um, there will be a school board election held in November as well. There are three seats, um, that will be up for election and we need to post the filing dates, um, which are July twenty-seventh at eight AM until August tenth at five PM. And, um, those will be posted, uh, towards the end of June as required, and then again in July, ten days before the filing date opens. And so that, that date falls before our next meeting, and so we are bringing it to you tonight to call approval.
Excellent. Thank you. Information item number two, first reading of additional revisions to the policy manual.
Um, this is a policy regarding curriculum development, clearly, uh, that we do not currently have, uh, corresponding policy, and it is one that we are required to have by Minnesota statute. And so, uh, we did not make any changes to the recommended language, um, from MSBA. And so this is to you for a first reading, and if you see any changes that you would recommend, please let a policy committee member or me know, um, so that we can address that when it comes for a second reading.
Thank you. Reports. In-person reports.
How exciting.
I am so excited because I don't need to unmute. This may be the first meeting ever, so. And I even have a shirt that says you're on mute, so, um, perfect. But yeah, it's great to see everyone's faces. So we decided to divide and conquer tonight, and I'm just going to share a little bit about what the principals have been working on since school got out. Um, one of the things that always comes up the first week or second week this year, um, after we, um, are done with students was the, is the annual curriculum review. And this year we had three subjects that we worked on. Music was in the first of their, their two-year process, um, special education, we had a program review, and this year we did something different. We have actually asked M-Ved to come in and help us take an outside look at our program to see if there are areas that we need to be looking at in different ways, just because it's, it's nice as the str, the structure of special ed changes and our needs change, it's nice to get that outside perspective. So Melissa Engel and, um, Sarah McConville led that and they did a wonderful job. So again, that's a two-year process and we will be working with that. And we did have representatives from, from each of the buildings doing that. We also have, um, our standards for science that are doing a shift, and so there's a team from kindergarten, third grade, sixth grade and ninth grade that have been working with, um, science teacher extraordinary, now principal, Mr., Mr. Graff. Um, he is leading the charge with that one, and so they really are taking a look at what the new standards will be like, and then they will be implementing those. Um, most of the grades will be implementing them next year. At the K-one building, we will be shifting both K and one at the same time the following year. Um, the other thing that happened was last week, we had the opportunity to send about thirty-eight people over to Wasikah for a Minnesota Educators, um, uh, Summer Institute, and it really was focused all about, around equity and access. And so there were, oh my goodness, I bet there were thirty-five presentations, um, and we, this is a collaborative effort with Minnesota State University of Mankato along with eight other districts. So we had great representation and we had the opportunity of Paulette Topol, Jen Maldonado and Emily Crock all presented, so I feel like we were well represented as well. And only as a follow-up to Tim's conversation, we are currently sitting at about a hundred and thirty-three registered for kindergarten. So that is about twenty higher than where we were last year, and last year was a really unusual year. We ended the kindergarten year with a hundred and twelve students, so we're looking forward to gathering a few more registrations yet before we actually bring them back in August.
And we also wanted to provide a little bit of an update on summer programming. Um, the high school has been, um, in session with credit recovery since school, um, ended. They'll begin their, they began their second session this week, so they have both an afternoon and a morning program, and that will wrap up before the first of July. We have our pre-K ECS, E-S-Y that began today, so we have our preschoolers who, who receive special education services and qualify for summer programming. We have them here, there are about thirty-three kids with us today, and that will continue three weeks, um, between June and July. Then our targeted services, um, program begins next Monday, June twenty-eighth. So that's a K-eight program. This week, we talked earlier in the year about extending that program to provide more services and more intervention time to students. So we're running five weeks this year instead of four. We also were able to double the number of students who are participating. So typically, we have around a hundred students participating, this year we have two hundred and thirty-seven to date. So we're really excited to get those kids in. That will be a four-day week program, eight until noon. Um, South and North will be housed at North Elementary and five eight will be housed at the middle school, so we have teachers and paraprofessionals and volunteers all coming together to help support kids during that five weeks. Um, then our summer food distribution program, because they did continue those free meals, we are doing our distribution locations at South, North and the middle school each Wednesday. We also have locations around the community. Folks can find that information on our district website as well as our Facebook page, or they can call any of our school offices and we'll make sure to get them that information, so we encourage people to participate in that. Any student that is in our summer school program, they also receive that breakfast and lunch, so they'll have a grab and go breakfast when they're at school, and then they have a lunch to take home with them. So we're excited to be able to provide that service as well. And, um, I believe that's all we have for summer programming at this time, but you never know.
I have a question, oh, sorry, um, have we had, are there any, are there a lot or substantial lot of people that aren't doing kindergarten? You have your first grade class numbers up at all, you know, because of the low kindergarten class last year?
You know what, we've actually only had a couple of people that have, you know, opted to come back, um, so that, you know, they're not as high as we would like, so, but we are open to taking more. Um, I probably should clarify, I did have a call from a parent, there's so much, um, in the news about kindergarten or enrollment or kindergarten numbers, class sizes being larger because people opted not to send students last year. And so I had a parent just saying that they were hearing that a lot, and so we were able to clarify that our class sizes will stay the same, our enrollment, we are hoping is a little bit higher, but we do have a cap of twenty-one and, and in the last seven years I've been here, we have never had twenty-one in a section. We've always kept it pretty close to about eighteen, nineteen students in a kindergarten classroom. So as we get more students, we will add more staff, hopefully.
Good.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Superintendent Gronseth?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Rigner spoke a little bit earlier about the legislative session. It is still in special session, and we did, um, receive directions today from MDE that just saying they have every belief that things will be resolved before the end of the month. However, if they're not, um, MDE would shut down on July first, but I wanted to assure people that the school district continues to, to operate and our summer programs would continue, the lunch and breakfast program would continue. Um, it gets a little, little trickier on the finance side of things, uh, because without MDE being in operation, we, uh, don't receive our payments as scheduled, um, but we have our reserve funds that would keep our, our payroll or our cash flow in place for, well, sixty-eight days or however. Um, and then, you know, when MDE did get, when, when it did get passed and MDE began, you know, we would replace those funds, um, if need be, and hopefully, as they said, none of that will happen, uh, but do know that Mr. Rigner and I will be preparing ourselves, um, and planning, um, in the case that that does happen. Uh, I also wanted to mention summer school, too. We have over three hundred and seventy students involved in summer programming this year, and, um, I believe it was somewhere under a hundred? Is that what I, or just at the elementary level? The elementary level. Um, so we have many, many more students involved in summer programming, and I just want to thank all of the teachers and the staff that agreed to step up after an unbelievable year and a half and said, sure, I'll, I'll continue and work with students because, and I know that they did that because they care about our students and, and want to help them catch up and be prepared for... and be prepared for, for next fall. So just appreciate everyone's time and effort that goes into that and, and meals and the extra enrichment programs that people have going. I think it's really going to make a difference for our families, and glad so many families came out as well. And with that, I will call it a wrap.
Excellent, thank you. We'll do around the table. Tracy?
Nothing.
I don't have anything either.
I just want to say, you stole my thunder. Because that's okay. I, I will as well thank, I can't imagine what it's been like to, to be a teacher for the past 15 months, and it's really inspiring that, that teachers care so much about their students' progress, that they are willing to continue on through the summer when everything they've done, you would, you would think that they would want a break, but it's just that important to them. And I think that, that's a huge shout-out to the teachers and the staff and the paraprofessionals that help out to make this summer school happen and help kids catch up and get ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Sutherland.
I have nothing. I just wanted to thank Scott Hermanson. He's retiring. I think he's been a wonderful champion of the arts in the community, and has done an amazing job fostering musical talent in our community, and his, his concerts will be missed, so, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to upcoming meetings of the school board. Now, we have a Shared Programs Committee, June 23rd at 4:00 p.m. in the district office; Negotiations Committee, June 25th at 9:00 a.m. in the high school band room. We have a Policy Review Committee, Wednesday, July 7th at 2:00 p.m. in the district office, and a Board Study Session, Monday, July 12th at 6:30 p.m. in the middle school media center; and a Shared Programs Committee, July 14th at 5:00 p.m. in this room, the governor's room of the St. Peter Media Center. With that, I would call.
I'll make a motion adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.